They've been.
Well, I'm actually.
I think that's good. It's like more doesn't have to be.
I am what?
Yeah.
So obviously.
Thank you.
I can actually finish this.
All right, guys. Stop. Maybe it's very obviously I can work for us. It's tough. Shut up. Change. And. I haven't. Sorry. I told you.
She's here. So.
I need to. I just. Cause I think. Actually.
Oh, yes, I brought. I think. If they. I think.
I just.
So enjoy this.
Yeah. We're coming back. The show. I'm. I'm sure.
See.
I know. I do. You're. Yes. They don't write us. I mean. Not. First ladies.
No, I guess. So.
Same. Hey. That's really. Yes. You know. That being so.
But. That's all.
Yeah, right.
It's.
Yeah.
She. She. For the.
Yeah. Something. About. You know.
Why you all want to land?
The. What you're saying.
I see you.
Yeah.
What you like? You're.
This way.
Oh, you're.
I'm close and saying.
I'm. Have this.
Yeah.
You're. See you. Come on.
Yeah. Yeah. It's.
It's.
Oh, that's.
I'm. I'm reading. I'm.
That's.
It's. Did that. Well, it's.
Of the. Of the. Session. Last.
Pretty. Fantastic. Hey. Well, this is. I see.
They don't.
I'm. Yeah. So. So. Not. He did. It's.
We're. That's. More. We're. We're here if anybody. Now we're not.
You were at the. And.
We're. So.
Fellas.
They're. Don't. No. It's.
You're. Oh, great. I think. Yeah. We are. Now see. I'm. I'm gonna. Looking. Like. My. Missed. Yeah. Yeah, that's probably what it is.
Still.
Here's a. Trust somebody. That's. Don't. That's good. Are you? All right. When I get my. 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 The mail. Well. That's. That's.
Well, the government. Where we at?
Well, sorry.
Okay.
Your fault. Yeah. Test. Yeah.
I'd like. Down to. Wait. That's. That's. So.
You're. Governor. Governor. Sorry. What's? Oh, I mean.
I'm telling now.
Yeah. I'm. Well done. Yeah. Well done.
Committee. Just. And. It's. Of. There. And your. Right. There. Something. So. Like.
Ross. They. Um. You know. But.
Oh, for. Yeah. You can. Any. Yeah. I can. I.
So they'll. Remember. So they're safe.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Um. They're.
So. We. Definitely. But we look down the middle. Yeah. You know. They're. Obviously. They're. They're. By.
Here's. I'm. Even. That's. I'm. I'm saying. It's. You know. You know.
It's. So.
Oh, my. I was. I love. Here. Seven. This is.
Yeah.
Now. I'm. Stay. You're. Well. Yeah.
Hi, everyone. I want to welcome you to the meeting. My name is Sue McCormick and I'm going to be the moderator for the meeting tonight. And before we start, I want to say a big thank you to the superintendent and the principal, and a special shout out to Heather and Forrest, who have all worked really hard to help us have a good meeting tonight. The school district has generously provided some refreshments and we just really appreciate all the hard work that went into getting us set up for tonight's meeting. I also want to just say a few words about this meeting before we dive in. So as many of you know, the school district redistricting task force has been given a very challenging job in a very short timeframe. And what we wanted to do was create a meeting so that we could use, make the most of our time together, hear from as many people as possible. We know that not everybody likes to come up here and speak into a microphone, so we have a couple of different ways for you to be able to share your thoughts, and I'll talk about those in a minute. But first, Chrissy, if you could go to the next slide, we'll just talk about why we're here tonight. So this meeting has two purposes, and one important purpose is to just let you all know about Act 73 and the task force and the work that they're doing. And then the second purpose of tonight's meeting is to gather input from all of you to inform the worst work of the task force. And also, the public input that we gather will also be shared with the legislature in the task force's report, so that the legislature can get a sense of what we heard when we held these hearings, and also when people submitted public comment to us. So the way we're going to get this done, we're going to start with a presentation by Edie, the co-chair of the task force, and that will be a brief presentation. And then after that, we're going to have an activity. We have some stations set up around the room, so that you all can have an opportunity to share some feedback, and we'll tell you more about those stations. We'll be doing that for about a half an hour, and then we're going to come back together and have some more traditional public testimony. I want to also welcome the people who are joining us virtually, and to let you know that during the period where there's going to be interaction in the room, there won't be any sound for you, but you will have a link to a survey that's going to ask you the exact same questions that people in the room are going to be answering, so be able to hear from our virtual participants as well. Okay? We have a few suggestions to help us have a really productive meeting. First of all, we encourage people here to be brave and not perfect. You don't have to find the perfect words or have it sound all polished, but we just really want to hear what you think. The other thing is, it's okay to disagree. These are big issues. We don't expect everybody to have the same point of view, but it is helpful if you keep the focus on the ideas and not specific people. We want to keep the shared goals of the meeting in mind to inform you and gather your input, and we invite you to listen to different points of view to understand, and then to share the time, so we can hear from as many people as possible. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to the task force co-chair, and she's going to tell you a little bit about the work that they're doing.
Thank you, Sue. Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for coming out tonight, and again, thank you to the folks here in Rutland for hosting us. We can't do our work without hearing from you. And I would love it if the other task force members could stand up and do a quick introduction. Maybe I'll run with the mic, so you can, they're all over the room. Just say your name and where you're from.
Beth Quimby from Linden.
Kim Gleason from Grand Isle.
Jen Batso-Jones from Barnett.
Hi, Jay Adams from South Stratford.
Scott Beck, St. Johnsbury.
Rebecca Holcomb from Norwich, and it's great to be back in Rutland.
Principal here. I'm Dave Walk, and I'm very proudly from Rutland.
And then not able to be with us tonight, we have Senator Wendy Harrison, Senator Martine LaRocque Gulick, and Chris Licarno. So we have representation from all parts of the state, and again, we're really happy to be here listening to you as well. So Act 73, Act 73 is 147-page law. This task force, so and that 147 pages, this is the intent for all of it. So how do we figure out in Vermont, how to make education better? How to provide substantially equal educational opportunities to prepare students to thrive in a 21st century world? This task force is eight pages of that bill, or of that law, it's a law now. So we are here to talk about and get information from you about a small piece of this Act 73. It's a big impact, but it's not the whole law. Next. So some of the other work that Act 73 is doing, obviously, the school district redistricting task force, why we're here tonight, the Commission on the Future of Public Education, that was put in law previous year, and what they're looking at a little bit more specifically is what rules should be around closing schools and how communities should have input in that. So that's what they're doing. This task force is not looking at that at all, so just put that out front. There's a Voting Awards Working Group to understand what happens if we change school districts. How do people have equal representation, and what does that look like in the state? So that's a different group doing that. The Agency of Education is making rules and laws around common calendar, common graduation requirements, I guess rules. So they're working on those pieces, among other things. The State Board of Education has different things, that they have deadlines, also December 1 deadlines to make changes. And then we also established a State Aid for School Construction Advisory Board, because we know that our schools are not new, and they need work all across Vermont. So the redistricting task force is designed to recommend new school district boundaries, and what are the, what should those look like? What should the configurations of the boundaries be? And we have four months to do the work, August 1 through December 1. We have to have that report done. We are an advisory board. It's the legislature that has to make a final decision. So we are just putting, not just, we are putting a report together for the legislature to use in the, doing their work in the session. There was a whole page of things that this task force has to take into consideration when we're looking at what the boundaries should be. Current populations and where people go to school now. What does transportation look like going forward? What are the geographic barriers? Because, you know, we have a few mountains and rivers and things like that that make it hard for people to get places. Facilities, we know that our schools are old. What are the grand list values in those areas? Are student populations growing or shrinking? Staffing levels? Access to tech ed? And how do we save money? So all of those things are things that our task force is taking into consideration as we draw the new maps. Next slide. What's going on? And you all know this, right? We have, in lots of parts of the state, there are fewer students, and it's the general trend that we have fewer students in the state. There are some pockets that actually have more students, but for the most part, there are fewer students in all of our schools. Our buildings are old, I've been talking about that already. We provide more to students in school than we used to, and every year, it's a little bit more. Educational opportunities are not the same across the state. Some areas, there are lots of classes with APs and all, you know, art and language and other places, we're just trying to get really qualified teachers to teach the students there. And everything costs more, everybody knows that. So we're trying to figure out how to make, how to make education better in this context. And we have changes at the federal level, and we don't know what they are, and it's pretty erratic for education right now. People tend not to trust government as much as they used to. It's, I think, at an all-time low how much folks are trusting government. And everybody is worried about what our task force is doing. We have been hearing this from the first meeting. So we know that. We want you to know that we know that. We're in the same world. Next slide. So as I said, we have four months. We started August 1. Our report is due December 1. We have had five meetings so far. Our sixth meeting is next Tuesday. We also have four public hearings. This is our third one. Hopefully, we're getting better at this every time, and this will be a nice experience for all of you. We have talked about three different maps so far, but no maps are final yet. So we have talked about what does it look like to have one school district for the whole state? We have talked about what it looks like if we had regional, just, no, the counties, counties. We talked about what it would look like for counties, and both of those plans, the task force decided not to go forward with those. We have a map that we talked about once that we're having refined, talking about what do the maps look like if we look at them based on where our career tech centers are right now? And that one's coming back. We have three maps that we're expecting to see at our next meeting, and so that's when we'll have more information. And so just to call it out, because ideally, we would have had public meetings across the state to say, what do you want in our schools? And then we would have gone to work and said, okay, so this is what everybody wants, this is what the maps should look like. And then we would have come back to you and said, this is the map. What do you think? Or these are some map ideas. What do you think? And we've taken your feedback and refined that. But in only four months, there isn't time to do that, and it's really important for us to get your opinion. So we apologize that we don't have more concrete for you to look at, but we do need to hear from you. So based on what you know, we want to hear that, and if you have questions, you can talk to any one of us on the task force. I'll have folks wave their hands again, and we'll answer whatever questions that you have. Next slide. So we have public comment at every one of our meetings, and we have four public hearings across the state. We did hear from folks who would really like, who would have really liked for us to have an engagement session in the Northeast Kingdom, and we apologize that we weren't able to make that happen. We did our best to spread them out across the state so that the most number of people could give us input. Every one of our meetings is remote, has a remote option, so if you know folks who want to join and can't, you can join our next meeting remotely, and that's again, next Tuesday, so please let them know that. And you can always have folks send public comment in, and we'll make sure that information is available as well. The Commission on the Future of Public Education has a survey that they have sent out. They have received 8,000, sorry, over 3,000 responses already from the, from folks across the state, which is amazing. We're really excited, and that is going to be closing soon. So, so, so there will be a link for folks who haven't filled that out yet, that you can fill it out today while you're here. And it's, yeah, but it is closing soon. And then the Vermont School Boards Association did a survey of all the school board chairs across the state, whether they're members or not, to get information from the chairs. What's going on in your region? How do we get information? How do we know better what's going on? We're going to use all of the public input to inform our map, our maps and our report in the end, and then the legislature will have the opportunity to read through it as well. Okay, you're done listening to me. That was it. I'm going to turn it over to Sue, and she's going to explain to you all the different ways that we want to hear from you.
Thanks so much, Edie. Okay, so this part of the meeting is when we're really going to hear from you in the first kind of way. So I want to tell you what's going to happen. So we have four stations set up around the room, and each station has a task force member at it, so you can also ask some questions if you have questions. And I'll tell you a little bit about each of the stations. So Station 1 is over in this corner, and that's a station where we invite you to talk about what are some of your concerns about this idea of redistricting? And then we're also asking you, are there things that you hope might be improved through a process like this? So that's the first station. The second station in the back of the room, the task force has identified six outcomes that they think are really important, and we're going to invite you to prioritize those and let us know which are your top ones that you think are important. And then we're also giving you an opportunity to let us know, how confident are you that a redistricting process could help achieve those outcomes? Okay? The third station in the back corner, we're simply inviting you, if you want to write a note to the task force, it can be a sentence or a paragraph. And then the last station is where we're inviting you to sign up if you would like to come up to the microphone and give public comment later in the meeting. Okay? And that's kind of first come, first served. I will tell you, the meeting is scheduled to go till 8:00 PM. If we don't get to hear from everybody, we're prepared to add 30 minutes on, and then after that, we'll give you a way to submit your comment to the task force. We think it's humane not to keep us all here till 11:00, right? I do want to say about the stations that you can use low-tech sticky notes, pens and paper, or you can click on the QR code at each of the stations. It's one survey, so if you are more comfortable using your phone, you can answer all these same questions on an online survey, totally your preference. People that are here virtually will be answering questions through that online survey as well. And we also invite you to get some snacks, talk to task force members. I think we're running a little bit ahead of schedule, Edie, so do you want to come back at 7:00, or should we try to come back a little before 7:00, like 10 of 7:00? Okay. So we'll come back at 10 of 7:00. I want to let the people who are with us virtually know that for the next half hour, there's not going to be any sound, so we invite you to fill out the survey. We have a task force member who will be available to answer questions. You might want to get a cup of tea or something, but we'll be turning the sound back on around 10 of 7:00 for the public testimony part of the meeting.
And if I could have the task force members just raise your hands and wave again, so that if anybody has questions while we're at this break and you're going around, you can find any one of us. Dave, you should raise your hand too, and ask us whatever questions you have.
Thanks, everybody. So we invite you to get up, move around the room, and we'll see you back here at 10 of
Hey folks, just want to tell you we have five more minutes and then we'll get back together. So if you want to get something to eat, or if you haven't had a chance to get to one of the stations, now would be the best time to do that. Also, if you'd like to sign up for public comment, please go to Station 4 and sign up. Hey folks, if everyone can take their seats, we're about ready to get started with the next part of the meeting. Okay, everyone. We're going to come back together. And before we go on to public testimony, I want to do two things. I want to just give you a little quick, real-time snapshot of what we're hearing in the room and on the survey. Before I do that, though, I have to tell you that because of an illness, the person that was supposed to run our online meeting wasn't available, so we had to change the link. There are people that have the old link that can't get into the meeting, unfortunately. So if you are getting a text message from someone saying, "I'm trying to get into the meeting, but I can't," what you can do is if they Google Vermont School District Redistricting Task Force, it's going to take them to the webpage that has the proper link so that they can access the meeting, okay? Okay, I want to give you a quick snapshot. We looked at the survey online and I walked around the room. This is quick. We'll look at this much more deeply, of course. But I want to share back with you some of the key concerns we heard from people in the room tonight about redistricting. A lot of people are concerned that it won't actually save money. We heard a concern that the needs of complex children won't be met unless this is at the forefront of the conversations. Many people are really worried about their schools being closed. That's a huge worry. People are also worried just about the culture of their rural town and the importance of the school in the town to the fabric of the community. People are also worried about the impact of transportation and kids potentially having to travel farther distances. So those are some of the big concerns we heard. In terms of some potential opportunities, what we heard is that people felt like redistricting could result in more opportunities for students, a more variety of opportunities, that it would position schools to better able, to be better able to share resources, and it would make it possible for teachers to work more collaboratively. When we asked people about priorities, too, are the clear top priorities. People really care about quality and equitable opportunities for kids. And then I think quite a few people do, did talk about cost as a priority, but those first two are the clear priorities. And, and then, and this isn't a surprise, because this is our third hearing, but most people in this room have low confidence that redistricting is going to accomplish the things that they care about the most. So that's a really important thing to just name. And then I grabbed a couple letters. I'm just going to read a few things. So one person writes to the task force, "We need to expand, bolster, and..." "We need to expand and bolster the tech school model and mission into our high schools for more education with purpose." One person wrote, "Thanks for your time, energy, and attention. It's so great that you're warmly and intentionally gathering public input. Schools are the heart of, and children the future of our communities. I'm concerned that this act has focused on costs rather than children's best interests and perhaps other cost drivers like unaffordable housing and healthcare should be taken into consideration." I have one more. "With redistricting, it will be essential to consider modeling, or I fear no real economic inefficiencies. I have worked in SUs and SDs. With an SU model, too much choice exists in most, in most things, curriculum, budget, staffing levels. With an SD model, we will see more unity, equity efficiencies, and equitable opportunities. This will benefit students if done well. We need clarity now so we can plan forward. The current model is not working, but if we do the same things that we always have, nothing will change." So that's just a little snapshot of a few of the letters. We'll have all the letters available for the task force. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Edie. And thank you all for participating, for your comments, and hope you had some good conversation with some of the task force members, and we'll turn it over for a public comment.
Thanks, Sue, and thank you all for your thoughtful input. We really appreciate that. I cannot thank you enough for being here tonight, for being here online, and for sharing what's important to you with us. I know public comment is hard. It's hard for a lot of people to come up to the mic, and we're grateful for everyone who has signed up to do it. We have about 26 people in the room, and for remote folks, we'll come to you after the folks in the room have had their opportunity. I have a timer. I'm going to hold it up in front of you when we get to two minutes. So we're going to ask you to keep to two minutes. And when you come up, if you could just say your name and your town so that folks know who they're hearing from.
So I'll announce whose turn it is and who's on deck, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name. So first is Greg Schillinger, and on deck is Pam Reed.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Greg Schillinger. I'm the principal here at Rutland High School. I'd like to welcome everyone to RHS. Thank you for being here. To the task force, I recognize your unenviable task, and thank you for taking the time to listen to Vermonters. I wish to speak briefly to the day-to-day reality of what is working. By way of example, our jazz ensemble and high school bands will be performing just down the hall tonight. You are all invited to attend. Tomorrow night, we have an orchestra concert, and the chorus and theater productions are upcoming. As a district, we're able to support robust academic and enrichment opportunities, including AP classes and strong connections to local employers through our place internship program and the Stafford Technical Center. The full spectrum of our students are supported, and our programs continue to grow. These offerings are possible in part because of the stability RCPS has as a supervisory district. This structure allows us to align our curriculum, target and shift resources, and build consistency for students across schools. It works. We're also just beginning to see the benefits of Act 127. And I wish to thank the legislators who worked hard to address the longstanding inequality in our funding structure. We understandably want to protect that progress. We will be watching closely for financial modeling from the legislature in the next year. And while I recognize that the task force is not responsible for that modeling, I believe it is important, especially for the legislators on this body, to know that districts like ours are extremely apprehensive about what the new formula could mean if and when a new map is approved. We will need clarity as early as possible. In closing, I hope that the task force will protect what is already working well in our schools. For us, that includes an equitable funding system and a cohesive governance structure. Buoyed by the hard work and the dedication of the RCPS community, our schools are thriving. Large-scale change, we hope, will not come at the expense of functioning systems and student opportunities. Thank you very much for your time and including the public in this process. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Pam Reed, the superintendent of Rutland City Public Schools and a Rutland City resident. Thank you for choosing RCPS as a host site and for the transparency that you've shown throughout this process. I truly appreciate the time, energy, and attention that you've given to this important task. Since stepping into the superintendency in July, I've had the privilege of leading a district committed to defining student success and aligning systems to support it. Our portrait of a graduate identifies the traits students need to thrive, and our strategic plan provides a pathway to ensure student growth and a guide for planning and budgeting. Both were developed with broad community input and embedded in our curriculum instruction and assessments. Rutland students have access to diverse and varied learning opportunities that ensure all students have meaningful education and their needs are met. Opportunities such as community-based learning, lifetime sports, a wide variety of advanced placement courses, and orchestra beginning in the fourth grade, as well as vibrant after-school and summer programs, are just a sampling of what's available to our students. Act 127 gave us a more equitable share of resources after decades of inequity and allowed us to move from short-term patching to long-term planning. That shift is reflected in our staffing, our programs, and our budget stability. Moving to a new foundation formula, excuse me, if the new districts are approved, does concern us. We will be advocating for timely fiscal monitoring, sorry, modeling as soon as legislature convenes in January. Without that, districts cannot make informed decisions, preserve, to preserve what works for us. Lastly, Rutland City Public Schools functions well as a school district. Our unified governance supports clear accountability and effective planning. We support maps that design envisioning regional high schools or career and technical education centers as anchors. Rutland City Public Schools already serves as a hub, with Stafford Technical Center drawing students from across the region, and our district's offerings show, are strong and accessible. Thank you for your thoughtful work. We're ready to lead, collaborate, and partner in shaping Vermont's education system.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Debbie Singizer, and I serve as Chair of the Barstow Unified Union School District Board and the Rutland Northeast Supervisory Union. Barstow is a pre-K through 8 district serving Mendon and Chetton with school choice for high school. I would like to share some information about a trend we are seeing when it comes to school choice. There is a growing share of public dollars being used for private high school tuition, particularly at the Killington Mountain School. Over the last five years, our district has paid 122 private school tuitions, and only half were for students who graduated from Barstow's eighth grade. It's clear that some families are moving into our district mainly to access school choice, private school choice. Looking at the data, this shift is clear. In fiscal year '21, 16% of our high school students attended private schools. By fiscal year '25, that rose to 35%, a doubling in just four years. At Killington Mountain School alone, our district tuitioned 15 students in one year, 10 of whom never attended Barstow. This means that local taxpayers are increasingly funding education for students with limited or only temporary ties to our community. As you review district reorganization, I urge you to establish guardrails around school choice, either by limiting public tuition payments to public schools or by requiring that private school tuition be available only to students who graduate from Barstow. Without these guardrails, our district is losing its ability to sustain a strong and equitable public education for our students at Barstow Memorial School. And that is a true disservice to Frederick Duclo Barstow, a soldier who fought and died from injuries sustained fighting for our country in World War I and in whose memory the school was founded. Thank you.
If Sue isn't here... You don't have to. You just have to look at me occasionally because I'll tell you when your time's up.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Sue DeKerelis. I'm a retired teacher. Taught for 43 years, am a huge supporter of public education, and love to have this opportunity to, to hear from you. One of the things I'd like to share is that you can watch these meetings, the redistricting meetings. And I spent 2 hours and 43 minutes watching October 10th, and I think it's a good thing to watch. But I am here to echo about school choice. And my concern is this, we're really eroding the public school by providing this amount of choice. And... And we have had really robust public schools that are really meeting the needs of kids. But more and more, parents are looking to have perhaps a private school education. And I'm just going to say, I did have one. And my father paid for it. And I'm really a supporter of public education. And I really hope that people think about, when you make that choice, you are eroding the public school. So, you know, something to think about. And also make sure to check in. I guess it's at the Department of Administration that you can watch these redistricting meetings. And they've been very helpful. Thank you. And thank you for your work. One other thing I want to say is, I see some legislators. I don't know how these people could possibly do this work in the amount of time they've been given. This is really, really important work. And fine, I'm watching. Okay. And one of the things that I would say is when I was watching it, Senator Jay Batten, I don't know if you're Senator? No. Jay Batten was saying, and I think we have to do it. Got to remember, we're all Vermonters. We want all our kids to do well. Okay? So this redistricting is going to be really something to craft to provide resources for all kids. And I hope we'll do it. Okay?
Good evening. I'm Kathy Solsa, Chair of the Rutland City Public Schools Board of Commissioners. Thank you for being here with us in Rutland tonight. As a board, we work to ensure the district reflects the values and priorities of our community. That includes setting a vision, approving a responsible budget, and holding the system accountable. Over the past two years, we led a community process to define that vision through our Portrait of a Graduate. More than 150 students, families, educators, and community members helped identify the traits our graduates need: adaptability, communication, collaboration, critical thinking, empathy, integrity, and wellness. These traits shape our strategic plan, which focuses on teaching and learning, inclusive school communities, and resources for success. We use that framework to guide decisions and track progress. Our unified governance model supports this work. With one district board, we can act quickly and plan comprehensively. That structure helped us expand programs, respond during the pandemic, and invest in student wellness. At the same time, we serve as a regional partner. Stafford Technical Center already draws students from across the region, and any future governance model should recognize our capacity to serve as a regional anchor. We strongly support Act 127. The updated pupil waiting system gave districts like ours a more equitable share of resources. It allowed us to move from reactive budgeting to long-range planning. That shift is already visible in staffing, program offerings, and student support. While I know this is not the task force's charge, I urge legislators to ensure clear fiscal modeling is available at the start of the next session. School boards need district-level projections under each map scenario to make informed decisions. Thank you for your time and service. RCPS is here and ready to partner with you in this important work.
Thank you for that much time.
I'm Justin Lindholm from Mendon, Vermont. I didn't go through most of the school system in Vermont, but I learned a lot from where I did go. And I learned that it's good to have large high schools. Very important to have large high schools. We have several levels of things like history, several levels of English, several levels of science. You can't get that in a small high school. When I got through that high school, college was easy. That's no kidding. That's how good that high school was. They also, this is another thing I want to see happen in Vermont that did happen where I went to high school. No bullying allowed at all. I cannot understand that Vermont cannot get rid of bullying. Bullying clobbers people like me with learning disabilities, anybody who's a minority. They get clobbered. They can't learn. This is something that has to be done. It can be done. I've seen it done. No bullying. The other thing is, I saw one map in the Mountain Times on the front page that showed them busing kids from Plymouth over to this side. That is too dangerous over time. Don't do that kind of busing. That's going over the Green Mountains. Of course, they'll probably go to Mount Holly. But Mount Holly's not good in the winter. Keep those kids from that side on that side. Thank you very much.
Hi there. My name is April Morse. I live in Castleton, and I teach at West Rutland School. With so many school district configurations in Vermont, it is not surprising that there are many small schools. According to research that was conducted at Columbia University, small schools are not only necessary, but their students show a number of strengths not evident in larger schools. Students from smaller schools are more active in extracurricular activities. They receive more attention from teachers due to smaller class sizes, and they have a closer connection to their communities. Historically, savings are not realized in school consolidation. A report conducted by the Center for Policy Research in 2005 demonstrated that in a longitudinal study conducted in rural districts in New York from 1985 to 1997. In 1985, the districts involved in the study consolidated their programs, resulting in reduced per pupil expenditures. However, it was found that by 1997, the consolidating districts had a higher per pupil spending rate than their non-consolidating counterparts. Community schools means less travel time for children. In consolidated schools and districts, children spend more time on buses before and after school. This affects their school performance as they are more tired and are required to sit and pay attention when they've already been sitting for an extended period of time before they have even reached school. A school board member and former principal who voted against consolidation in Pennsylvania said that he recalled seeing some elementary school students bust in who were asleep or crying because of the distance traveled. I'll keep going until she tells me my time's up. The term economies of scale, which is in the back of the room that everybody talked about, is used in the business world to describe if one reduces production cost by increasing the size of operation. By definition, it is the cost advantage that enterprises obtain when more units of something are produced on a larger scale, with the cost generally decreasing with the increasing scale as fixed costs are spread out over more units of output. When this occurs, economies of scale are said to have been achieved. The question is whether they can be achieved for all school districts. In order to determine this, we would have to look at transportation costs, capital expenditures, student dispersion, quality of education, differences between large and small schools, community wealth, and program-by-program differences. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to just holding this space for everyone to share their thoughts. It's really important. My name is Sarah. I'm a mom of two little girls in Plymouth, Vermont. And I'm just up here to talk about, for small rural towns like Plymouth, school choice, it isn't just about convenience. It's about survival. When a town doesn't have its own elementary school, like Plymouth, the ability to choose a school that is within the radius of where that family works and travels day to day, this gives families a reason to stay. Take that away, and families start leaving. Because who is going to buy a house that will send your kids an hour away to school? Taking school, thank you. Taking school choice away will also lower the prices of homes. So if Vermont is thinking they're going to save money and by sending and redistricting, redistricting the schools, all of these small towns that are going to be redistrict, my property value is going to go down. And then I'm not going to pay as much money in taxes. And then the education system isn't going to see that money. So school choice doesn't hurt the state. It strengthens it. These are not towns asking for special treatments. We are asking to keep a system that works. Rural Vermont is unique. Driving an hour each way to only assigned schools isn't realistic for working families. Choice allows us to make decisions that are best for our kids and still be active community. Killington Elementary School has one of the robust, most robust, involved parent involvement that I have ever seen. We raised money for things like the playground that is brand new. And we come together. We parent as a community. I know all of the kids' names in my daughter's classrooms. I know the parents' names. I'm here with some of them tonight. We stand together as a community. And if you take that choice away from my family and you send my daughters to a school that is an hour plus away, I will not have the luxury of dropping them off at school every day. I will have to bust them, and they will be in danger crossing over a mountain in the wintertime. So please, I encourage you. Don't take school choice away. Reframe it, rework it. I will volunteer my time to help with what works best for the state of Vermont. Maybe that's not private funding. Maybe that's not sending them to KMS. But keep the small schools alive. Keep those kids and those parents in that community. Thank you.
Hello. I did not prep for this. I don't have a typed outline of anything. I'm kind of speaking from the heart. I did not dress for this either. I wasn't planning on wearing leopard. I am a child of school choice. I grew up in Wells. I went to Granville until ninth grade, and then actually took that school choice money. And I went to Walnut Hill School for the Arts in Natick, Massachusetts. Because I had, I had a 4.0. I was an A-plus student. I was dancing. I was going to Rutland six days a week to dance at Adam's School of Dance. And I had tapped out. I had, I couldn't do it anymore. So I went to Walnut Hill. Guess what? I moved back. I moved back. My parents taught the entire time. My dad taught at Green Mountain College. My mom worked at the Fine Arts Center in Castleton. Right? And I moved back with my husband from New Jersey. I convinced him to come back, too. And now I have three children that go to Poltoni. I am worried that small high schools are going to be forgotten. I can see that Mr., I might say his name wrong, Montbriant, in the paper, he is going to Fairhaven Union High School. He is going to Proctor High School. And it's like Poltoni High School is the girl at the prom that doesn't have anybody on her dance card. All I'm hearing is that these high schools are refusing to come to the table. Go to the table. It's okay if you don't want to actually dance with that person, but at least entertain the idea. Be a part of the community. Because that is ridiculous. We don't have, we're not privy to this information of what's going on behind closed doors. Right? And the last thing that I want to say, I taught at Castleton College as a dance professor. I was a dance professor at Skidmore College. I was a special educator at an alternative school in Poltoni. I was a special educator at Poltoni High School as well. The paraeducators are the backbone of the public education system. Look at what they are making per hour. It is abysmal. So who you're getting are either ultra-experienced people that would pay, give me $5 an hour because they love working with children, or people that are using that position as a stepping stone because it's not a living wage. $18 an hour, you could easily make that anywhere else. At Stewart's, as a manager in Poltoni, you can make $18 an hour. Right? These are people that are literally, they have to toilet. Look up that verb. Okay? They should be paying, be being paid much more. Okay? Please keep paraeducators in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jim Haff. I'm with the town of Killington. I moved into Killington in 1997. My daughter was six weeks old. Act 60 came into place. I went to all the meetings. I was told there was a declining enrollment of students. There was too many schools. And it was costing a lot more money. It's 28 years later. My daughter's 28. I'm being told the same thing. There's too many schools. The cost is going up. And it's just crazy. It's great to hear about everybody's education here, but I went to school, and there was a principal that once asked me, what did I get out of school? What I got out of school the first day in kindergarten was, I want to do something and be on my own. I got to get out of here. Three daughters now, later, growing up through Killington. All gone to Smith College. And they're excellent. School is, I spent 15 years at the Woodstock High School Board for Killington and everyone else. I'm 10 years in the select board. I kind of get the feeling like we're here with a bunch of people that we're all pro-school, but also on the select board, it's the cost. We have to figure something out. Just have to figure something out. As far as school choice, I think, Greg, you were a principal at Woodstock High School, one of my first years on the board. And we had, I think, at the time was a House of Representatives. Alison Clarkson was a House of Representatives back then. And I had to bring up the fact that, forget about sending money to KMS. We send money out of state. We send money out of the country. You know, we got to stop that. You know, most of the people that go to KMS, they probably pay for it. But once you do it, it's done. So my biggest thing is here is, when you're looking at it, Killington is Rutland County. Pittsfield is Rutland County. Don't make us go the other way. Thank you.
Hey, how's it going, everybody? Zachary King. I am from Plymouth, Vermont. Obviously, from Vermont. Me from Plymouth. You guys probably know what I'm going to talk about, a lot of what Sarah already mentioned. I want to talk about school choice in the only map that I have seen so far, which has us moving from the mountain, MBSU, to Rutland. One, I, so two comments about that. And let me just preface before going into those comments. I grew up in Philadelphia. I'm a public school kid. And the public school that I went to was awesome. It had a lot of problems, as you can imagine, in Philadelphia. But it was a magnet school, right? So it drew kids from all over Philadelphia. And it was large, 3,000 some kids. But it had incredible opportunities. It was incredibly diverse. And that was really because it could draw people, and people had choice. Right? And so when I look at the map that was proposed, which I understand is one of three maps, but it's the only one I've seen. So it's the one I have to react to. It does two things. One, it takes away a really important choice for people in my town, in Plymouth, which, you know, is a unique situation. Right? We are a community that, as far as, you know, I've only been there for five years. So Sarah can probably speak to this better than I can. But everybody that I know, everybody that I am friends with, right? We go to Killington or we go to Woodstock. Nobody that I know goes to Rutland. I have no qualms with Rutland. I'm going to go rock climbing after this. But moving our community out of our current district and pushing us into Rutland, it, one, is going to do all the things that Sarah already mentioned. Right? But it's also just going to really affect, like, the fabric of our community. Right? Like, we have these longstanding expectations about where we are going to go to school, where our friends go to school, where their kids go to school. And so I really would like to preserve school choice. I understand there's problems with it. But that doesn't mean it should go away. It's not a, it's not a binary decision. Thanks.
Hello. Thank you for coming today. Because, first things first, Jeremy from West Pollock. And I wanted to get us all on the same page, first of all. Everybody here is here because they care. You're caring about one of two things, maybe both. One, the students. One, the students. They should be at the center of this. And two, your taxes. Because taxes, I did my 20-year budget the other day, did not look good. Some of the things that I've been really focused on though are that we need a variety of school sizes. It's not, every student is unique. You can't have one size fits all. That didn't work for No Child Left Behind. That doesn't work in Vermont's very diverse geography. What we need to do is offer parents who know their children opportunities to pick the right school for them. Now, my wife works in, in Fairhaven as a librarian at the public school there. She sees different things than what I see. I'm not saying one is right and one is wrong. I'm just saying that in all of this, regardless of the school, you put the students first, the market will follow you and put the students there. So if we, if we go with this supervisory district model, that's a way of making students fit the mold more than what students can naturally do. So I want to encourage you to think about supervisor unions. Yes, they are more to manage, but they can also be better for the students in the end. Because rural areas, we need options. There are many rural areas in, in this part of Vermont where we don't operate schools. Thank you for your time.
And thanks, everyone, for keeping on time.
Hi, I'm Wendy Doss McNotten. I have got children in Cavendish and I have got students in West Rutland. And I was a student of Vermont growing up myself. I want to urge the task force to keep our districts as small as possible and to keep as many as possible. Decreasing the number of districts is going to cause issues for the students. It's going to make it so that I can't differentiate for the students in front of me as easily as I can now teaching in West Rutland. It means those kids are going to have to drive much greater distances, as we've heard tonight. I've gone over Mount Holly for 18 years. It's not a good trip. It's also going to create major issues for communities. This is likely to lessen local control, our own decisions of our own local schools in support of those places. It's also going to potentially close local schools, which are the heart of our community. So yes, this is students first, but this is also Vermont communities first as we try to determine this mapping. And the reasoning we keep hearing for this plan is that we need to lower taxes. But everything I can see from this plan is that it doesn't account for the costs. We don't know what the capital expenses will be, will increase. We don't know what the transportation costs will be. That will increase. We don't know how we're going to need to increase teacher salaries. We don't exactly know what this is going to do to my homestead taxes because I live here in Vermont. We don't know what it's going to do to the increase of the special education budget. All of the expenses of this plan have not been calculated. And the governor is claiming that it's going to save money. And based on the average house value where I live in Cavendish, it's going to save a few hundred dollars. And that's without accounting for the costs. And those costs are not just economic, they're educational, especially in a time where we are now getting less federal support than we ever have before. Please don't cut the support we have in Vermont for our teachers and students.
My name is Daphne Van Schei. Can you hear me? I come from West Pollet, Vermont. It's a non-operating district. And by that, I mean we tuition students, all students from grade seven through 12 to a mix of public and independent schools. And my mother went to Bern Burton, which is in Manchester, from Peru, a mountain town in the 1950s. I went for a year to Long Trail and two years to Vermont Academy. My son is the third generation of having choice and we chose a public school for him. And I'm concerned about continuity in education and making sure that whether the choices for a public school or an independent school, that a child is not asked to change schools midway through high school. So that's my main concern, I guess. Act 73 seems to provide continuity in education for children of independent schools by guaranteeing tuition through graduation if they were accepted or enrolled as of June 2025. But it doesn't do the same, or appear to me to do the same, for children who are enrolled in public schools and who tuitioned to public schools out of a non-operating district such as mine. So I don't want to be told in two years, when my child is a junior or a sophomore, that he has to change schools to an assigned school. That's not fair. It is not equitable. And I would like to commend my local school district, the Medway, the Medway School District, which operates within the Bennington Rutland Supervisory Union. They're being proactive and working on consolidating and options. But I am concerned that we're going to lose the choice to attend New York public schools. And it's very important to me that children that are in independent schools, which I support choice to independent schools, having gone to them myself. But I think that continuity in education is important for both public students, public school students, at their school of choice, as well as independent school, children at their school of choice, who are enrolled currently and who are going to potentially be having to change schools to an assigned school if, if legislative changes aren't made to Act 73. Because there is a tuition continuity in the legislation and it only applies to, oh, I'm over my time. It only applies to independent school children.
Thank you.
Hi. First, I'd really like to thank the task force for your care and your thoughtfulness and your openness tonight. I'm here because I care deeply about Vermont's students, especially those in our small, small rural towns. And also I care very deeply about my Vermont community writ large. I'm a fairly typical Vermonter. I grew up in Lunedary, Vermont, where I benefited from school choice. Unbelievably, I also went away to the Walnut Hill School because my mother was driving me an hour to Brattleboro from Lunedary. And that was an amazing experience back in the 80s. But anyway, I went to UVM and then I lived for 20 years in New York City. And there I worked within its public school system, doing arts and education programs. When my son was going into kindergarten, my husband and I decided to come home to Vermont. And now I live in Win Hall and he is a senior at Bern Burton Academy. Equity is and should be a guiding principle in this process. Real equity means ensuring that all students, no matter where they live, have access to a range of opportunities, academic, cultural, and extracurricular. These are the things that enrich a student's life. Larger school districts, like in New York, where I had a lot of experience, and maybe in Chittenden County, have, naturally provide a broad array of programs and peer groups. For the students in Vermont's rural areas, school choice has been a mechanism that makes that level of opportunity possible. If this redistricting eliminates choice for the towns in my community, students may have fewer options, longer commutes, and fewer chances to participate in athletics, the arts, and after-school life. In our mountain towns, school choice has been a cornerstone of stability. It keeps families in Vermont, supports local employers, and sustains year-round communities by drawing teachers, doctors, and much-needed professionals to the area. Schools like Bern Burton and the Mountain Schools strengthen our communities by bringing together students from every background to learn and thrive side by side. Finally, continuity and fairness matter. Our independent schools, like Bern Burton, Long Trail, Maple Street, Stratton Mountain School, exist because families have invested their time, talent, and resources to build them. For some of these schools, like Bern Burton and Stratton Mountain School, that investment spans generations of Vermonters. Families have shaped their lives around these partnerships, choosing to stay or return to Vermont because of the educational opportunities they provide. Thank you.
My name is Amber Morris. I'm from Wells Village School. I have a kindergartner and she attended pre-K two years prior to that. I'm grateful for this opportunity and I apologize for not being prepared. I'm sorry. I attended Green Mountain College. I'm a New Yorker. I graduated high school in New York. And I came back here because of Vermont. We didn't intend to have kids in the school district. We didn't expect to have kids, but my God, we were so lucky to land where we did. I've been in public schools in Florida, in New York. I've attended private college in New York and Vermont. And I have a master's degree from a public school in New York. I have a lot of perspective. My grandmother was an educator. She educated in a one-room schoolhouse. My mother was an educator. So I'm not an educator myself, but I have a decent amount of perspective. And I will tell you, I have never seen a school with so much dedication, professionalism, leadership, service, as I have in our tiny, 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 little tiny Wells School. Right? So it triggers me when I think of a massive blunt tool like redistricting having negative impacts and potentially closing these small schools who have such great educators in them. I'm aware, or I suspect, that prior efforts at consolidation have not achieved the financial expectations that were promised. So I fear that a future consolidation effort will not also provide taxpayer reductions. So for instance, at a earlier meeting, there was this spitball idea that maybe, oh God. I want to end with a metaphor, an agricultural metaphor. We all know that the most efficient way to produce crops is in a monoculture. But I want to suggest to you that diversity is a protector in times of trouble. If we need resilience, we need diversity. So I think that that is what's best for our small schools in Vermont.
Well, that's an omen. I am David Zuckerman. I used to be a lieutenant governor, state senator, and a state representative. I served on the Education Committee when we passed Act 46. I supported it. But when you look back, that ended up being hugely disruptive for very little gain. And this is Act 46 on steroids. Voters voted because their taxes were too high. They're right. For the last 25 years, taxes for working people as a percentage of their income have gone up faster than working-class people's taxes, than their, than high-income folks, excuse me. Vermonters also cherish their local schools. While there may be some savings from eliminating some superintendent positions and some other administrative positions, I implore you to not overpromise in order to pass an overhaul that will close many schools, keep kids on school buses for longer, and not save significant money. I hope you'll eventually, I hope you and eventually the legislature and governor truly address the property tax inequity without destroying the heart of many communities while not saving significant dollars. Please remember, there's no going back. And I have yet to see a town whose school was closed that grows and thrives. You can get savings with BOCs, thank you. You can get savings with BOCs and reducing administration without eviscerating local community schools. We make our kids do their homework and cite their sources. I hope we make sure the administration provides evidence and the legislature also seeks out evidence before going down a path we will all regret. Thank you.
My name is Martha Abbott. I own a tax preparation firm. We've been in business for 40 years. I have seen clearly the lack of fairness in the way we pay for schools. People with household incomes of $115,000 or less pay about 3% of their income for the school tax on their home plus two acres. Households with $500,000 of income pay about half that, or 1.5% of their income. And those with incomes of $1 million pay about 1/6th of that, or 1/2 of 1% of their incomes. This unfair tax system could be fixed with one simple piece of legislation. But instead, the governor and the legislature chose to upend our entire system of public education. I would urge this committee to write a report saying that there is no redistricting map that is going to fix the problem of high property taxes. That while there may be cost savings to be had by the sharing of school resources between selected schools, this process should be carefully examined on a school-by-school basis, not mandated by an arbitrary map. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I am a mom. I have two children and we live in Land Grove, which is a tiny little town that doesn't have a high school. And I believe in school choice. My husband and I moved to Vermont in 2019 to create a healthier life for our children. We chose Land Grove. We fell in love with Land Grove. And Land Grove is part of the BRSU. It's a wonderful community. And we chose Land Grove as well because of school choice. That was our number one priority when deciding where to live because we wanted the choice for our children. I also opened a business in Manchester, which allows me to stay close to my children's school, when they have attended both, while they have attended both public and independent schools. I can manage transportation to after-school sports, often up and down the mountain for things like Nordic skiing. If school choice is taken away from our mountain towns, our family would be forced to leave Land Grove. It would simply be impossible to run a business and support our kids if they were attending school in a completely different direction. I know I'm not alone in feeling this way. Many mountain residents would face similar challenges and potentially impact, and the potential impact of these maps leading to a loss of existing school choice or separating our communities would likely lead to a mass exodus from our towns, a great loss for our community and our state. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm Patricia Agner and I serve as the Director of Technology for the Rutland City Public Schools. And I'm from Fairhaven. This is my 23rd year as a technology director in Vermont. Prior to that, I was a technology director in Addison Central in Middlebury. And what I want the citizens of Vermont to consider is that technology consolidation is going to be very tricky. It's going to be time-consuming. It's going to be time-consuming, expensive, and we're going to have mixed results. So we need to be an early part of decision-making. There's a multitude of different technology across school districts, schools, and grade levels. And the challenges are going to impact things you haven't even thought of. Of course, instruction, business functions, like how do we pay our people, or how do we pay our bills? Cybersecurity, a very scary word, I promise you. Communication with parents and with everybody that are constituents. Data systems, professional development, learning, and innovation, which is what we're really interested in for our kids. So all of these systems look really different in schools. We have different Google domains. Our student information management systems can't talk to each other. We can't even talk to the state right now really very well when we do our reporting. We have data analytics that look different, different internet service providers and internet connectivity. Wow, cybersecurity. We do things differently there, and we have to protect our systems. Software and hardware warranties that look different, contracts that look different, and some of them are very extensive, they're multi-year. Accounting systems, busing software, physical security, like how you get in the building, this is all technology. Differences in machine quality, HVAC systems, like how we heat our schools and cool our schools, that's all technology. So I want you to understand that we need to move very carefully when we talk about technology, and I haven't heard anybody talking about it to date when I've been watching these programs. But changes could lead to slowdowns, inefficiencies, stress on the systems and people, and then complexity, service interruptions, and could end up giving us unequal educational opportunities for our 21st century learners. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Denise Cooperly, and I live in the town of Chittenden, which is currently a school choice for high school. My oldest daughter, Adeline, attends the Long Trail School. It's an independent school, and she goes there by choice. She spends an hour on the bus every day to get to that school by choice. By removing choice from our town of Chittenden, you will be changing the course of my child's future. Every day, we see our daughter celebrated at a robust independent school, which offers her opportunities available that are not available at the public schools that are surrounding my town. When we chose to move to Chittenden in 2017 for our two daughters, it was because education was our highest priority. Both of our daughters attended the Barstow Memorial School. To remove choice from our town would dismantle the educational opportunity for my other daughter, Grayson, who would also like to attend Long Trail School. This ability for our family to access the right school for our children is crucial to their futures. On one hand, we faced an honest and necessary conversation to reduce educational spending, and I support that. But this conversation does not consider the quality of education and the life-changing choices that families have made to invest in their Vermont communities. My family is invested in the Vermont community of Chittenden, Vermont. The current town tuition system works efficiently and is cost-effective. Long Trail School has a robust program and excellent education outcomes. They have strong independent finances and philanthropic support. Our independent school is not in competition with public schools. Our daughter is thriving at this school, and it celebrates her individual needs. Please let us continue to celebrate our children's education. Don't dismantle it. I urge the task force to consider these Vermont children and how your decisions will affect their future. Thank you.
Lots of Sarah's. I'm going to talk quickly because I wear a lot of different hats. I'm the town administrator of the town of Menden, represented well this evening, people from Menden. And I've worked for Menden for 25 years, and my former select board in the back of the room would amiss, I would be amiss if I didn't mention that our property taxes have increased by 30% over the last three years. We cannot afford this trend. We all know that, okay? So we have to make changes. But what are the changes that we're going to be made? I come from a school district that is already consolidated somewhat. It is the town of Menden and the town of Chittenden. For the really small schools that might need to be consolidated with another small school, like what we did, it'll be okay. We have community at Barstow. We, I'm the president of the PTO. We, as a community, raise our children. So if one family is struggling, the other families surround that child and bring them to sporting events and bring them to the different events at the school. And so we really parent as a community all-in-one. I am also a foster parent, and I have a child that I have the benefit to be able to continue to raise as a co-parent, even though he's out of the state system. He attends the Rutland City Public Schools. I can't say enough good things about the quality of the teachers and the education that he is getting here in Rutland in a much larger atmosphere than Barstow is, and I'm comparing my daughter's education at Barstow, a small school. However, the sense of community and the raising of those children is vastly different between Rutland City as a large school versus Barstow as a small school. My other thing is I am also married to an educator, and we do not support our teachers well enough to provide a quality of life that we want our teachers to be able to live and work in the school district. And I am out of time. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, and thank you to the task force for your time on this important issue. My name is Sarah Reed, and I live in Land Grove. My husband and I own and operate a small business, and we have two school-aged children who both attended our local public K-8 school starting in kindergarten. Currently, one is in sixth grade at Floodbrook and thriving, and the other is a ninth grader at Stratton Mountain School here, sitting and doing homework as we speak. Both of my children, as well as their father, albeit 30 years ago, benefited from the amazing opportunities, including choice, that Bennington Rutland Supervisory Union has provided for its students and families. Not only has the BRSU helped to create a tight-knit community in an otherwise geographically vast and rural area, but it continues to improve student outcomes and increase opportunities for all kids, all while remaining financially prudent. We have a great thing going on in the BRSU, something that should be observed and celebrated. I am here, therefore, to ask for two considerations. First and foremost, please keep the BRSU and other similar SUs across the state intact. Breaking them up, breaking them up by slicing and dicing a map will negatively impact our kids and our communities. Second, I urge you to identify healthy and dynamic SUs like the BRSU and shine a light on them. Ask questions about how choice works and really be curious. Visit our schools, all of our schools, both public and independent. Find a diverse group of families and community members and ask them how their children's needs were or are being met, and how the ability to make educational choices have impacted their lives and quality of life in their communities. I can assure you, you will find that while nothing is perfect, the structure of the BRSU and other similar supervisory unions who we've heard from today are, they work exceptionally well. It is a model that should be replicated across the state and not decimated. Please preserve choice. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Lamson from Middletown Springs. I am concerned about our small elementary school closing because of minimum class-size requirements. We like our school because it is small. We have thought about moving before, but our school is one of the biggest reasons why we stay in our current community. I am concerned about losing school choice. In my community, I've seen the benefits for students and their families in selecting the middle and high schools that makes sense for that student's goals, aspirations, and strengths. Some students have opted to go to West Rutland because of its small community or the community feel and their athletics. Others have chosen to go to Polley because that's where their parents went, and that's where their parents work, and it makes sense for their family. My sons have chosen to go to Long Trail School because that fits with their academic goals and aspirations. Students thrive when they can choose the place that can best meet their needs. I am concerned that we will not, in fact, save money or improve outcomes, but that the reverse will happen. I am concerned about bloated administrative salaries. I am concerned about our ability to retain talented teachers and administrators with fewer jobs to go around. I am concerned that our most vulnerable students will fall through the cracks in large consolidated districts. I am concerned about increased costs, such as transportation. I am concerned about the ability of schools to utilize local food sources for student lunches. One of the things I love about my school, elementary school, is that my child gets to eat food that is grown in the school garden and that a local farmer, thank you, a local farmer comes in and does food programs with the, with the food she grows and teaches the kids how to cook and eat vegetables like kale or beets, things that they might not otherwise be exposed to. And having a robust food program, we have had in lieu of busing, we have figured out as a community how to prioritize the things that we want while controlling costs. And lastly, I am concerned that the timeline for this task is unreasonable, given the scale, yes, given its scale and its weight. We are making choices that will affect the lifespan of our children, their education, and the span of four months, and that is completely ridiculous.
And after that, we'll go to the folks online. Just want to call out, sorry, just not taking your time, just so you know, you'll still get it. It is 8:00. We do have a longer list. We do have folks online, and I know that some of you have, have to leave at 8:00. Please don't hesitate to go. The task force members will be here. We will be here to listen. I think a lot of the legislators who are here are probably going to stay. I've now shamed them into staying and listening. But, and thank you, everybody, again, if you have to leave. Again, I just really am grateful to you for coming and sharing with us today.
Thanks. Hi. So Erin Stack should be here tonight. That's my wife. I'm Brandon Hamilton. We live in Plymouth. Several weeks ago, we were residents of Killington. We wanted to start a farm, get some lands, grow some animals, and make a better life for our family. So we moved to Plymouth, where we have 10 acres now to play with, and a barn ready to go, and a family eager to get into it. As you can tell, we are now going to be facing this potential obstacle of needing to move back to Killington to keep our daughter in Killington. Education is very important for us. She is thriving in Killington. I moved to the state about 10 years ago. My wife, she is native. Her family has been in Vermont since before Vermont was Vermont, generations and generations. So we want to farm, and we love having our kids in the best school we can get them into. Currently, the move that we took only took us maybe 10 minutes extra to get to school. Now we're facing an hour each way in good weather. So let's talk about the bad weather. That's what, at least an hour and a half, maybe two hours per way. I don't think that's safe for our family, and I'm sure plenty others also are facing this. So thanks.
Good evening. I'd like to thank everyone from the task force to all of you here tonight. Whether you're participating or observing, your engagement and commitment are what make this work meaningful and impactful. My name is Christine Falengo. I'm an RHS graduate, but not at this school. My younger sister was the first graduating class in this building. I live in Weston with my husband and two daughters, who are currently in sixth and eighth grades at Floodbrook School. I've been actively involved in their education since preschool and deeply value our community's approach to schooling. I recognize that change is necessary in Vermont's education system. However, I also believe that rapid or disruptive shifts can do more harm than good, especially for our children and our communities. In the southern part of the state, we've already taken meaningful steps towards consolidation and adaption. While these efforts might not be as visible to those in the north, our mountain communities have worked hard to preserve what makes them strong. When Act 46 asked districts to consolidate, we stepped up quickly and meaning, and willingly, forming the mountain towns red and helping establish the Taconic and Green Regional School District. We did this because we know our communities and we understand what our children need. Right now, we're facing difficult decisions about how to shape education spaces that truly serve our kids. The geography in our region makes it challenging to define a single right high school for every student. That's why maintaining school choice is so important. It allows families to make decisions based on what works best for them, whether that's proximity to work, extracurricular opportunities, or specific academic programs. For many of us living in mountain towns, this flexibility is a key reason we've chosen to raise our families here. It not only supports our children's education, but also helps families thrive in a place where community and adaptability go hand in hand. I ask the task force to recommend the BRSU schools remain together in any new map of district building. Thank you.
So that is everyone in the room that signed up to speak. We're going to switch to allow folks remotely to speak. If you do have to leave, I'm going to ask that you do that quietly. And thank you again, everyone, for being here. Nina, I'm going to have my timer running, and when you hit two minutes, I'll just say two minutes into the microphone. And we'll be able to hear her. Great. Go ahead, Nina.
Hi. I just want to correct some misinformation. A lot of people are throwing some, you know, language around about independent schools competing with public schools. Act 73 limits further the schools that are eligible to receive public tuition dollars. And it has always been the case that you, towns cannot pay tuition dollars unless they do not operate a public school. So for example, the independent schools in the BRSU, like Long Trail, Maple Street, BBA, et cetera, they receive public tuition because the towns do not operate a public school. They are the de facto public schools. They're not competing with public schools, and it is just not correct that independent schools are taking money away from the public schools. They only get money when there are no public schools in those areas. And I just wanted to clarify that because so many people have misconceptions about how that works. The other point I want to make is that Act 73 changes the way independent schools are funded in that there will be a flat rate that every student in the state receives, including independent schools who get tuition from non-operating districts. That is all the same. So I think that it would be a good idea for everyone to read the sections of Act 73 that describe the way independent schools will be funded and chosen going forward. Thank you.
Can you let us, can you let us know your, sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Nina. I have a child at the Long Trail School.
And is there anyone else online that has their hand? I don't see any of their hands up. I'm going to give you an opportunity to put your hand up. Am I missing anyone? If you come and sign up, you, you have our undivided attention. Everyone who was going to leave, I think, has already left.
Thanks. I know this was unexpected. I wasn't planning on speaking because I thought this would be covered by someone else. I moved to Danby two and a half years ago from Nashville, Tennessee. My wife is a fourth-generation Vermonter, and we're thrilled to be back here. And I feel like this conversation is happening as if the population of Vermont is fixed, and all we have to do is maintain the, the consistent population of Vermont. This whole problem exists because of lack of enrollment, right? And I'm speaking from experience that what attracted me to move to Vermont is, and to live in a rural area, is the community access to either small local schools or access to historically, the historic public schools or independent schools. And I think if we take that off the table or completely turn that upside down, people in a similar situation are going to reconsider whether they would move to this state or whether they will stay in this state. Like, I moved here because I wanted to be close to, to my kids' grandparents, but also because I saw what the school options were. And you take that away, what's going to bring new people in, and what's going to keep the people who have moved here in the last five to 10 years? And so I really think that we, we don't only need to be servicing who's here right now, but we have to be thinking about, like, who is going to be filling these rural towns for the next five generations? If the jobs aren't here, we need people who are coming from elsewhere, who are bringing their businesses here, or going and working out of state, or working remotely and bringing that tax base into the state. And so I just think that needs to be taken into consideration. Thank you for your time. Thanks for being here.
Hi, my name is Jenna Tate. I live in Arlington. I'm super nervous, so forgive me for that. But one of the things that I wanted to say today, I've heard a lot of people speak about school choice and how it's benefited them in their small towns. I live in a community that's right outside of a region that has access to school choice. And I have seen ways that that has impacted my town in not very positive ways. I know parents, for instance, that actively seek houses just a couple miles down the road so that they can get access to those really high-performing school choice schools. And I definitely, as a parent, believe that we all want the best education for our children, and we want opportunities, and getting to choose where we send our students can have a lot of benefits for our family. But one of the things that I'm concerned about with the consolidation is that my school, which faces many challenges that I'm trying to help the school overcome, is going to be closed, and that we may be sent to another school that is facing many challenges and now has more students that they have to deal with, and never get access to those higher-quality school choice schools that just neighbors get access to, and thinking about that. And so I, I just want you to be thinking about how the consolidation actually gives us equal opportunities to, to attend as high-quality schools as every student in Vermont gets access to. So I don't think that certain communities should have access to choice to go into exceptional schools while other students don't. And while I'm trying to work in my school district to improve student outcomes, this whole process of redistricting looming over our head and not knowing what's going to happen makes it really hard to come up with plans and strategies that we can implement to improve student outcomes, and may make my voice even watered down when I'm put into a larger district. And I'm, I'm nervous about losing my agency and my sense of control over what is going on, not only for my own students, but improving outcomes for all students. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Katie Stiles. I am the parent to a first grader at Stockbridge Elementary School, super small school in the White River Valley Supervisory Union. And I just wanted to come here because I spend a lot of time talking to my child about accountability, ownership, owning the decisions he makes, the consequences of those decisions. And I fear that these decisions have not been fully weighed out. There's not a true sense of accountability for what is happening. We haven't fully weighed the cost drivers of what are, you know, ultimately raising the costs of education in this state, health insurance. You know, we talk about economies of scale. We talk about the things that are driving the costs and how that could potentially help drive those costs down. Health insurance bargaining as a state has not driven the cost down for the state. We use that economies of scale model to purchase health insurance for our schools, for our teachers, for administrators. It has not driven the cost down. It has significantly increased it. What is happening on a federal level is also an extremely concerning potential cost driver that has huge implications for the way that we are funding health insurance, all of that, for our teachers. As a business owner that pales sales and use, one-third of which funds education and meals and rooms, a quarter of which funds education, I'm nervous that we are rushing this decision to, against an arbitrary timeline, to make these choices and not weighing all of the implications for the larger picture of people who own property as businesses, of people who own property and run businesses. Weighing the full picture is more important, I think, than hitting this four-month timeframe. So that's all I'd say.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth. I'm from Arlington. I have kind of a different situation, and I would say it wasn't always my intention to homeschool my kids. In fact, I started my daughter in kindergarten a couple years ago. She's in third grade, my oldest daughter's in third grade now, age-wise. And I do some personal family health issues, said, you know, this is, I, it'd be better for us right now. But her sister is only 15 months younger. I continued to homeschool. And I've heard a lot about, people talk about choice, and I think to just kind of like unmask that, I think we are talking about quality, and quality does mean equity. It does mean opportunity, but it also means academic performance. And so I homeschool my children at the opportunity cost of what would be a salary, maybe $60,000 or $80,000 a year, because we don't have choice in Arlington. And our family knows that's not sustainable. I may, my husband and I may make a different choice if we felt that our school had the supports, because we like the small school, and small schools can be incredible schools. So, like, many people in this room were in a holding pattern, wondering, do we move? You know, and I, I lived in New York, and I heard this for years and years, that a zip code shouldn't determine your educational opportunities. But it does in Vermont. And I think that's sad, and it shouldn't be this way, because we are such a unique state with such a unique history educationally. And I think taxes, certainly an issue. I think that's been covered as able to be addressed by others. Okay, I'll wrap up. Basically, Vermont needs innovation and change, and that's not going to happen when we make ourselves bigger and clunkier to manage. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Well, thank you so much, especially to all of you who are still with us, and to all the people who made public comment. We're going to wrap up. And Chrissy, if you could go to the next slide, just going to just quickly tell you a few next steps. So the task force will be meeting three more times, and the themes from these hearings are going to be discussed during the November 10th meeting. So there's a meeting next week, and that's also the night of the last public hearing. Then we'll be talking about what we heard. The report to the legislature is due on December 1st. And as a reminder, that report will include up to three recommended maps, and then it will also include the themes from what we've been hearing from, from the community. So thank you again for coming. Edie, do you want to say anything else?
Coming out here, appreciate your input, appreciate your thoughtfulness, appreciate all you legislators for coming out here. This is not easy, and we just, we appreciate your kindness to us tonight on the task force as well.
Thanks, everyone.